Good evening. This is to call to order the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Westmont Village Board for September 1st, 2011. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Mayor Pro Tim Emery?
Here.
The Clerk's here. Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Klebanow?
Absent.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
Manager Searle?
Here.
Attorney Zemanek?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
He's here in the nearby.
Economic Development Director and Assistant Manager Kimball?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief and Deputy Liquor Commissioner Gunther?
Here.
Public Works Water Department Supervisor Ramsey?
Here.
Fire Department Chief Trout?
Here.
And Acting Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the minutes of the combined Committee of the Whole Meeting and the Board Meeting held August 11, 2011. Any changes to those? Any requests for open forum this evening? None. The ComEd Storm Report will be at Tuesday's September 6, 2011 meeting, which has moved to, in observance of Labor Day, obviously, we'll have our meeting on Tuesday, September 6th, rather than Monday, and ComEd will be here, live and in person.
There's a couple of representatives that will be here, and they will make a short PowerPoint presentation, and then they'll make themselves available for questions, either from Board or any members from the public, which you may want to, you know, open it up for that, since it's a voting meeting that night.
Okay. And they will supposedly talk about the power outages, their responses, their infrastructure, and what we can expect in the future, and also their reaction to things that are going on in Springfield.
Yes.
Involve them.
Yes, all those things.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
I just have a few things. First of all, remind all our residents and all of us that school has started, so be careful driving in the morning. Look for the kids, they're walking to school. And everybody, have a wonderful Labor Day weekend, relax, enjoy. The summer is ending, which is a spooky thought for Seneca. We don't like that thought. And a belated happy birthday to our police chief. His birthday was Monday, so. And that's all I have.
Thanks. Thank you. Our village attorney?
Just like to ask for an executive session to discuss sales price for real estate. And that's all I have.
All righty. Village manager?
Just a couple of things I wanted to ask the Board's permission to move the next Committee of the Whole Meeting from Thursday, September 15th, to Tuesday, September 13th, because of the Illinois Municipal League Conference starts that day, and typically, in years past, we have done that. So if that's okay, we could put an item on the agenda for Tuesday to actually vote to do that.
Would that be combining, then, the Committee of the Whole and the Village Board Meeting to the following Monday?
That would not be combining the meetings, that would simply be moving the Thursday Committee of the Whole Meeting to Tuesday, and then we would still have our meeting on Monday, on the 19th.
Why not Wednesday? Why would we move it up two days when the-
Because there's a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that night.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Otherwise, we would.
Yeah.
I do have a conflict with that Tuesday. I'll try to rearrange my schedule. If not, Emery will attend.
Trustee comments? Sounds good.
Sounds good. The other item-
Is it a case that, I mean, everybody's not going to be here Thursday night? Is that what it is, or what?
I don't know. I know some people have registered already. It's just, I anticipated, since we have done that in the past, that we would want to do that. That's why I was asking if we would want to consider it.
Yeah. That's fine.
How many registrations have we got so far?
For the conference? Well, we're not doing the registration any longer, so we would have to do some checking.
I'm registered, Jimmy's registered, I would imagine the mayor's registered.
I'm registered. I'm not staying down there, I'll be back that evening.
Okay. I think it'd be more convenient if we can do it on that Tuesday, so people don't have to rush back if they're not staying downtown. Because, I mean, it's, I'll be back here, I'm speaking on Friday, but I will be back here Thursday. Are you staying down there? I am staying downtown. Staying down?
No.
Okay. So you are, all right. Well, and usually the mayor does too, doesn't he? Okay. Well, I think we can-
We can put it on the agenda, and you can decide on Monday, Tuesday if you want.
All right.
Fine.
Okay.
The other thing I had was, the mayor had asked me to mention, and I know the Board, most of the Board members are probably already aware of this, we have a new newspaper that's coming to town, it's called The Bugle. They plan to launch on September 14th, and I know they have been here in the community and been talking to some of the community groups about the fact that they are bringing this new paper to Westmont with an emphasis on local news. They come from a chain of papers that kind of comes out of the south suburbs, several of the papers have been around for a number of years. And he just wanted me to, just for public information, to let folks know that that newspaper's going to be starting on September 14th. They do have a website, if you want to go and look at it, it's www.bugle, B-U-G-E-N-E-W-S-P-A-P-E-R-S.com, buglenewspapers.com.
And it will be strictly about Westmont, and nobody else?
But it won't be like tri-local where it's combined?
No, it's Westmont only.
We heard a presentation that said that unlike some other papers, they're not going to have like a first page of local news, and then news from other communities and subsequent pages, it'll be a real strong emphasis for local news throughout the paper.
Oh, good.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee items. Trustee Nero?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Trustee Seneca?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I would like to extend sympathy to Bob Gleason, who recently lost his wife, Arlene, longtime Westmont resident, Bob's a former employee of the village, and Arlene was just a phenomenal woman and great supporter of Westmont government and Westmont in general, so she will definitely be missed. Also wanted to remind everyone that Frank Trout, our fire chief, will once again be hosting the 9/11 ceremony that we've had every single year since 9/11. We've never missed a year, and probably never will miss a year, as long as Frank Trout is around. It will be on 9/11 at 1:00. It's, because it's such a commemorative anniversary this year, it's going to be well-attended by many dignitaries, many service organizations. Frank has secured a speaker who was actually in the tower, in one of the towers that day, and fortunately was able to get out, so he will be speaking. I urge everyone to come out, it's a great ceremony. It will be down at the Police Department on the north end of town, I think it's 500 North Cass, outside weather permitting. If it's poor weather, as it was last year, it will be in the firebase, so hope to see everyone out there, and that's at 1:00 on 9/11. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Scott?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the residents who have done the comprehensive plan survey. You've got almost 500 so far that were turned in, that's a great improvement from the 37 that we had just a few weeks ago. And I think the businesses are in the 40s or almost 50 right now that have completed it also. The survey time is coming close very soon. Matter of fact, I think it's going to be this weekend.
Second.
The second. So if, a couple of stragglers out there, if you still haven't filled it out, please do it, whether you're resident or business, we really appreciate it, it's important for the village, for our future. It's your opportunity to tell us how you want the village to be in the next 10, 20, or 30 years. Also, we're going to have a community workshop on the comp plan, which will be Tuesday, October 4th, 7:00 PM, right here at the Village Hall. It'll be the kickoff introduction for the comp plan to the citizens. Houseil Levine, who's the company that's doing it for us, will be the presenters, and it will explain what a comp plan is, and explain the upcoming exercises that the public's going to be invited to partake in. And with that, I think Mr. Kimball is going to do a presentation for the mapper tool, which is another avenue of information that we're asking the village to have some input into.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Scott. We do have some finite numbers, as of this afternoon, on the completion of the surveys that you referenced. The residential survey number stands at 479, and 47 business surveys have been completed. And we asked Courtney Kishima, who is the tech who's working with Houseil Levine, how does that compare to other communities, other comp plans that you've done? And she said, in a word, that's fantastic. She says, you're doing quite well, that's a respectable percentage, and she says they're very gratified by the volume of responses that they have. Now, one of the things that we're not quite so happy about is that we've only got 10 different people that have responded to our mapping tool inquiry. So with the Board's permission, we thought it might be a good idea just to take a couple of minutes and kind of walk through this on the computer here, so if we can get our tech people to put the internet up here, let's see, what do we have to do to get this guy going again here? Mike, this is your laptop here, how do we get-
No, it's not Mike's laptop.
It's Glenn's? Okay, here, let's see. Trying to reactivate the-
There he comes.
Okay. There we go, okay.
To the rescue.
Shucks. Okay. Is that the secret password?
That's now been televised.
Okay. Well, as you can see here, if you first go to the homepage of the village of Westmont, www.wesmont-il.gov, and the first thing you'll notice there is Mayor Ron's smiling face, and if we kind of scroll down over here to the right side of the page over here, you can see, I'm going to wiggle the cursor there, where it says Comprehensive Plan, and if you tap on that, that's going to bring up the Comprehensive Plan website. Down over here at the lower left, there's a section that says Get Involved, and if you click on that, that's going to bring up an area that talks about how you can participate, and then we're going to go up here, over to any place on this area where it says Mapping Tool in here, click on that, and then I'm pre-signed in, you'll have to sign in if you haven't already, and I'm going to go ahead, because I'm Fred Kimball and already signed in, I'm going to click on the Westmont map over here, and there's a little explanation, it says, "To add points to your map, simply zoom to the location of where you would like to add a point, and click on the map." This will open a window, a dialog box, where you can add information about your point. For more help, you can go up here and up to the top and click on Help. So let's just say okay at this point, and now you'll see, this is the map of the Westmont here, and let's see, I'm trying to think with a mouse how you can go to the, let's see, how you do this here. Let's say we wanted to do this here, and let's say we pick a point on the map right here, and we're going to add a point, and we're going to say, okay, so my, you know, my name is Joe Anarchist, so I'm going to pick Village Hall, and I'm going to go over here and say that this is an undesirable use, because I don't like government, I'm an anarchist, so we're going to say, we're going to label Village Hall as an undesirable point of interest, because, you know, I'm an anarchist here. So just speaking comedically and hypothetically, that's how you would do that, and then you put Submit and Add a Point there, so that's how you participate in the mapping tool. But if we go over here to the right, to the legend, you'll see that there are serious descriptions of the types of points of interest that you may choose to participate in. Listing community assets throughout the community, development priority sites, problematic intersections, undesirable uses, key transit destinations, desired use or development, identifies an area and a use that you would like to see in the village of Westmont, or poor appearance, areas that you feel are unsightly or could benefit from additional landscaping or aesthetic improvements. So you, as an individual, this is how you can get your input and your commentary about what you think about various areas and points of interest and locations within the village, is bring up the map, click on the point, and then put your dialog in there to indicate what you think is important, where you think areas need help, what types of developments you'd like to see, all those kinds of things, and that will allow you, as an individual citizen, to kind of have your say and contribute to the overall success in the creation of our new comprehensive plan for the village of Westmont.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And then the only other thing I've got is to send my condolences to Bob Gleason also. And that'll be it, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming?
I had noticed around town, I'm just curious, some signs in some storefronts that are talking about grants and that. Could we have a little explanation on that?
Yes, trustee, I think Shannon Malik, our Assistant ED Director, and Larry McIntyre are collaborating with downtown property owners who have vacant storefronts about placing displays in their windows, and touting the fact that we have grant funds available from our local downtown development grant fund to provide facade improvements for things like signage and awnings and lighting and window and door replacement, and then we also have an additional $3,000, in addition to that $5,000 in facade improvements, where landlords can apply for funds to help upgrade some of the infrastructure in their buildings, such as upgrades of their electrical service, upgrades of their plumbing service, perhaps to make bathrooms ADA accessible, that sort of thing. So these are all grants that can be applied for in the village of Westmont, and Shannon had the signs created, I think they're kind of a very attractive white-on-blue sign, advertising the fact that we do have this grant funding available. You can receive the applications right in Village Hall in the Economic Development Department, and we'd be happy to walk you through the process. We do have a downtown development grant committee that reviews these applications and makes formal recommendations to the village board for their consideration. The grants are a 50% match, not to exceed $5,000 in grant funding for the facade improvements, and not to exceed $3,000 for the infrastructure-type improvements. So we're hoping that landlords who have vacant buildings down there will take advantage of this in an effort to upgrade the appearance of their buildings and make them more marketable, and hopefully fill those vacant storefronts.
Have we had any of our landlords take advantage of this yet?
Well, certainly over the past years, trustee, we've had a number of businesses in the downtown. I don't think we've had any yet this year. Yes, I'll take that back, I believe we had one that the village board voted on at 41 North Cass, Tracy Curtis for Sweet Pea Children's Clothing and Consignment Store, certainly in that first block in Cass Avenue. I know in the past, Kaplan Furniture has had a grant, I know 29 and 31 North Cass have had grants. I believe Vincent Torrey had a grant last year to upgrade their awning and signage. I think we had a grant application for the new Mediterranean Cafe Calcadon at 15 South Cass. I know the building at, I think it's 110 South Cass, had a facade improvement within the last couple of years, where they painted and took off some old unsightly plywood siding off the front, and refaced and resurfaced the brick that was underlying, and much more attractive building. So I think all along our downtown area, many businesses, I think even the one next door to the Village Hall here last year, 37 West Quincy, they got a nice grant from the village to upgrade their awnings and signage on the front of that building, making it much more attractive. So certainly over the years, we've probably had, I would estimate between 25 and 30 of these grants over the past three or four years.
But it's been primarily the tenant coming into the space, not the property owner, correct? Has been applying for that?
In some cases, it's been both, I think, yeah, but predominantly, when a tenant comes in, I think they're the ones that take advantage of that for their initial signage needs. But it's certainly open to landlords that have vacancies, you don't need to have a tenant in order to make your building more attractive, and this is certainly an opportunity to have the village contribute some to the cost of improving that appearance.
I was not aware that we were subsidizing landlords.
The what?
I was not aware that we were subsidizing landlords on vacant property, so that's pretty interesting.
That would certainly be at the discretion of the village board, because the Downtown Development Committee only makes a recommendation to the village board, the final decision would reside with this body.
It was developed as a property improvement, whether the landlord, you know, property improvement program, I guess, whether the landlord pays for it or the tenant pays for it. But certainly you guys could clarify that, if you don't like landlords applying for it.
I know Elmhurst, Wildback, had signs in some of their vacant windows promoting grant money, the same way.
I don't know, Larry, if you wanted to comment any further, you know, we're talking about trying to adopt various themes for the window displays in the vacant buildings, maybe tie in with the Westmont Historical Society, things of that nature?
Yeah, I can just speak to that briefly. With some of the downtown vacancies, we're reaching out to them, to the landlords, to talk about beautifying their current properties and seeing what we can do to make the whole downtown more attractive, and in fact, we're hoping that we can get a few things underway here in the next, I'm hoping, 30 to 45 days, so that we can create a series of displays that focus on the 90th anniversary of the village. And so that's yet another aspect of trying to beautify the downtown, but yes, I was assisting Shannon with some of the promotion that we did, and you're correct, that Elmhurst had a similar plan, and we did get information from them as we were developing that.
Anything else, trustee Fleming?
No, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of things. First of all, my condolences also to Bob Gleason. If there was ever any doubt in Arlene's mind as to how well she was liked in this town, if she was sitting on her cloud and she saw the crowd out the door and down the street and around the block, and I know it took us an hour just to pay our respects, and we started in the building, that she certainly would have been proud to know how well she was liked, so my condolences to Bob. I have another issue that I'm going to raise. I thought long and hard about taking it in executive session to the village board and discussing it, however, and then on certain issues, I will have to do that, so I'm going to ask also, since we're going into executive session, that we do so on personnel. But we have, as we've been talking about in great depth, and it will really amp up, our comprehensive plan. Our comprehensive plan, in anybody's mind, does not include gang activities in this town. Not all of the activities that are being pointed out to people on the Board and the Police Department are necessarily gangs, some of it is, and some of it's what I'll just call punk behavior. In Illinois now, there's a new law that if there is, someone's convicted on drug deals, those convictions can now assess the investigation costs incurred by the Police Department and municipalities, back to the convictee. I have started talking to our various representatives in Illinois about doing that as far as gang activity, which would include any enforcement of anti-gang activity, graffiti, something that can be tied back and the like. Down in my neck of the woods, and I've been talking to more and more people, and as I talk to them, I'm getting more phone calls and more emails about it, but it starts out with, you walk your dog late at night, sometimes 11, 12 o'clock, and there's no garbage anywhere, and when you walk your dogs 6 o'clock in the morning, there's all kinds of garbage all over. It hasn't blown there, it's been dropped there. People are finding it in their backyards, close to bedroom windows, patios, that type of thing. We have tried to start a neighborhood watch down in my area, and there's a lot of people who are extremely vocal about this. We've got, and these are kids, when I say punks, I mean kids, and I'm going to put them as high as 25 and as young as 10. They're climbing the fences, our complex is totally fenced in, but they feel the need to rip the fencing down in order to access backyards and in order to be able to walk around. There is a definite upswing of vandalism and graffiti in this town, so I would like on the agenda for the next set of meetings, an ordinance that anyone selling spray paint in town has to keep it under lock and key. Some of the other towns are already doing this, if you go down to Joanne Fabrics down at, in Downers Grove on 75th and Lamont, theirs is all under lock and key, and it can only be purchased with a picture ID. Sellers just have to maintain a log of those sales, and it's a simple sheet on a clipboard, somebody buys spray paint, first the case has to be unlocked, they have to provide a picture ID, and they simply write down, you know, Illinois driver's license, name and number. This is not only a extremely ugly habit that is starting to be stepped up in this town, it's expensive, it's depressing, it certainly doesn't help our image in getting people to come here, and none of us want it. So what we need to do, of course, is, the reason that I'm bringing this up in open session under trustee comments, I would like members of the public, for this and other things that I'll talk about, we need you to email the board, call the board, do something, because I want to know just how prolific this is. I'm hearing from people who are north of 55th Street that they're seeing what I'm going to just term it punk behavior. In the alleys late at night.
Parks.
You know, God forbid trustee Seneca leaves any of her window coverings open, she'll have an audience, because they are always in her backyard, they don't belong there, but they're always there.
Running through.
And, but anyway, we would like your, just tell us, if you're seeing this, tell us where, so that we can work with the Police Department to compile just how prolific this problem is with vandalism, graffiti, and people being in places that they have no reason to be. I don't know whether the curfew is being enforced with very tight enforcement, maybe with school back in session, this stuff will go down, some of it will dissipate, but I'm not going to count on that. I am particularly ticked off at an incident that occurred two nights in a row to one of my neighbors last week. I'm particularly ticked off about it because of my personal background and my history, and what would happen if it were me that this incident incurred to, so just bear with me when I tell you the story. When I was just out of law school, my boyfriend and I were driving through the west side of Chicago, and he had a small Italian sports car. And we pulled up to a stoplight, and a bunch of punks came up to us like rats out of a sewer, stuffed a rag in the exhaust, the exhaust pipes of the car, which automatically, you know, it died, came to the windows of the car and said, "You get out, or we're coming in after you." We made the decision to get out of the car and run, I was younger and thankfully much spryer. They wanted the car, but of course, it did not stop them, that is, Jimmy and I were running down the block to hear the whiz go by my head and the stop sign that I was running past be pierced with a bullet. So that's my history, and the incident that occurred on 60th Street two nights in a row last week, between midnight and 2:00 AM, was a group of punks decided, and this is stepping up, I've heard it from other neighbors, that they are going to congregate and walk down the middle of Westmont's streets, and if cars come, the cars have to stop. Now, my neighbor was by herself, it was near 1:00 in the morning, both nights, she was forced to stop, she was scared out of her mind, and she called the police, and the dispatcher told her, "They're not doing anything wrong. We don't, there's nothing we can do about it, they're not doing anything wrong." Now, with my history, if I go down 60th Street and a group of punks stop my car, am I going to be in fear for my life? You better believe it. If they're wearing black hoodies, as these guys were, am I going to be in fear for my life? You better believe it. If one of them reaches back here, am I going to hit the gas and run him over? You better believe it. And then I'm sure the Westmont Police will arrest me for vehicular homicide. If people are calling our 911 dispatcher, since we consolidated with Downers Grove, and they are frightened to death and being told that there is nothing the police can do about it, that is unacceptable to me. In any event, it is unacceptable. In this particular event, the fact that this is going on in this town is unacceptable to me, let alone the response. Therefore, I again am asking the people in Westmont, email or call, because I'd like your ideas. I am willing to support extra funds to go to Mr. Zemanek to take ideas and say, some of them will look at him, "No, sorry, we can't do it, that's, you know, constitutionally illegal," or whatever, but other things have gone on in other towns that have made it very undesir- very undesirable for people to act their, the way they are acting in Westmont. If you make things difficult for them, and that every time they think they're having a little party, someone in Brown shows up in a Mark Squad car every single time, you know, the party gets old. So, if we hear from the citizens of, "Can we do this? I see these kids by me doing X, Y, Z, can we do this?" We're gonna, we're gonna filter that over to John, and we're gonna get as creative as we can, because I want this behavior out. I want these people out, I want the behaviors stopped. In 45 days, it is September 1st, so the middle meeting of October, I would like a presentation to this village from the police department in 45 days, to discuss for the residents, because this is who it affects. This is not, it's not a good thing for this to be done behind closed doors. So, although we work with the police department, we will continue to work with the police department, I want the residents to know what they are doing, what we are doing, what ordinances we are gonna look to enact, how we are gonna do this with curfews, with whatever it's gonna take. There will be no profiling, but there will also be no tolerance on this kind of behavior. So please, I want everybody to get involved, so that when the police come to us and they tell us, "Here's what we can do, here's what we should do, here's what we'd like to do, do we have your backing?" We can get everything in place that we need to tackle the problem, and they can, where they need to step things up, they can step it up, where they need to make changes, they can make them, so that everything is up and operating by next spring, when we know this will start to proliferate again over the cold winter, sooner if possible, but that's a goal. And the other thing, lastly, that I do want to tell the residents of the village, is there was a discussion a couple of weeks ago at the village board where the chief said, you know, that the officers, he apologized that the officers did not recognize trustee Nero at a, at a power outage, and that they should know the trustees, and he apologized for that. What I think the residents need to know is that, I personally don't want the officers to know who I am, chief. If I, if they don't watch the meetings and they don't look at the pictures on the website, I'm fine with that, because I want them to treat me and every other trustee like they treat every John and Jane Doe in this town, so that we know how they're interacting with our citizens. We don't want any special treatment, we don't even want recognition of, "Ooh, you're a trustee, ew." I want them to be, we're just like everybody else, and I want us treated that way. That's how we can monitor, that's how we can write the appropriate thank yous and the atta boys, as well as the, you know, "I'm having a problem." So, my comments are long, but I appreciate you for, appreciate you listening them, and please, let's all work on this problem together. Okay? All right. Now, on to the agenda. An unfinished business, item number two, water rate analysis fiscal year 2012. Board to hear a water rate analysis presentation and consider the possibility of current and future rate increases to account for maintenance and infrastructure costs. We have our public works director, Steve May, and our water director, Mike Ramsey.
Yes, thank you. As the description states, you know, we're here tonight to discuss and ultimately consider an adjustment to the water rates that are changed for the, for the consumed public water supply. You have seen this presentation and this information, we've discussed it before at Public Works Committee, and you've also seen a presentation regarding the rate study. I don't remember the date, it was, it's been since May, but at that time that you saw this, you only considered the adjustment to the rate that included the increment that DuPage Water Commission was charging for the sale of water to the village. We do buy our water from, well, from the city of Chicago through the DuPage Water Commission, and so we have costs for purchasing the water, and then our costs for, I'll just sum it up as the water distribution system, and then that's offset by the rates that we charge for, for the consumption, for the meter usage at any location, whether it's business or residential. In that presentation, you saw the kind of, you know, the water division or the water utility, there's a separate standalone utility, so unlike the other, you know, village budgets, our, our operating budget in the water division is that, you know, as balanced by the water rate. So the revenues and the expenses are together in that one fund. You saw a significant reduction in the amount of revenue that was made, and our maintenance costs were going up. So, Mike is here, we're gonna go through this presentation again, he has a, this is an overview of the water rate study that we did, highlighting, you know, the different top areas and how they all tie together, and then our conclusion at the end of what we think the water rate should be to, you know, to sustain what we're doing.
Okay. I'd like to thank everyone again for letting me, coming up here and letting me talk about this presentation. I think this is an important presentation. It affects every resident in the village of Westmont, so it is very important that, you know, that you allow me to do this. I'm very grateful for you, let me go over this again. Let's see. How am I gonna do this, Glenn? Page up, oh, there we go. Okay, there we go. Okay, the first slide you can see is, is the Illinois Department Natural Resource Water Rate Study from 2010. That was the most current one they've done. And you can see, what I did was I took all the towns that are border around Westmont and what their water rates are, and in the first column, you can see is what their rate is per thousand gallons, and in that first rate, in the first line, you can see that Westmont, first column is that Westmont is the lowest out of all the bordering towns around us right now, at $4.37. That is our current water rate, after the DuPage Water Commission passed through last year, it was 4.16. We increased it by 21 cents to make it 4.37, because that's what DuPage Water Commission increased theirs by. You can see the next column is the fixed charge. We're basically in the middle there, and in the last column tells how we bill residential customers. Clarton Hills does monthly, most of us do bimonthly, and Willow Brook still bills quarterly. The bottom there, the study was based on 196 water customers that receive Lake Michigan water, and you can see Chicago was the lowest out of all those 196 towns, and Delmar Woods, which is on the south side of Chicago, southwest kind of, was the highest. And, that's the extreme there, and you can see the average one out of all the 196, the average rate, water rate of all the towns was $5.22. This graph basically just kind of shows you exactly what I just described, except you can see, we take the water rate and the fixed costs and combine it, and that's the green bar. And you can see, we're comparable to Downers Grove and Darien and Oakbrook, and Willow Brook and Hensdale and Clarton Hills, their fixed costs, once you add that into their water rate, really increases their, their overall cost to the resident. Other towns, Downers Grove, they have additional fixed costs, and what I mean by that is they base their fixed cost on the size of the water meter. So the smaller the water meter is, the lower the fixed cost is. The larger the water meter is, the more the fixed cost is. So that's why it's a little, it's kind of skewed a little bit, because that's based on a 5/8 meter, but if you based it on a larger meter, Downers Grove's fixed cost would be higher. So you can see, besides that, just Darien and Oakbrook are basically very similar to what ours is combined, so. All right, DuPage Water Commission water rates for the next five years, I did talk to Terry McGee, who is the superintendent of the water system for DuPage Water Commission, and he updated me on what they're planning on doing in the next three years, and you can see, the first year was, what it was last year was $1.98 per thousand gallons, and this is what we pay DuPage Water Commission, this is what we're paying, this is our rate. This year, it went up to $2.28 per thousand gallons. The next three years, they're basing, they're gonna increase it by about 15% over the next three years. He gave me his best estimate what it's gonna be, so we're gonna be paying, he's guessing next year 2.56, and then the following year 2.85, and then 3.16. So you see, the next few years, it's definitely gonna keep going up. What was great the last, last year and this year, we did pass through that additional cost to a point. So it did get us close to what, you know, what we're paying, so it did make a difference in our overall, you know, our revenue. Here's the breakdown of how they get to that cost. You can see back in 2006, 2007, their O&amp;M, which is our operation and maintenance cost, was $1.23, and you can see, a couple of years there, it got lower, but now, ever since 2009, 2010, it's really jumping up. Their fixed cost doesn't change too much, but their O&amp;M cost definitely is gonna be gradually going up over the next three to five years, which is reflected in the last column, total cost, and that's what we're gonna be paying them per thousand gallons over the next three to five years. And then this graph kind of shows that, how, you know, it was kind of stagnant there for a few years, and all of a sudden in 2009, it's been really started jumping up, and that's basically what that graph shows. Basically, this, this graph, or this columns kind of show, the thing you really want to concentrate on is the last column, is what were our differences in our overall revenue, based on after what we've bought the water and how much we've sold the water for, the difference in what our revenue is. You can see back in 2000, 2008, we netted $2.2 million, and by last, this year, fiscal year last year, we were at, we had dropped down to $1.7 million. So, we'd already lost over $500,000 in revenue over just a short period of time. So, that's, with them increasing their costs, and they're charging us more, we're losing more and more revenue. And this paragraph kind of shows that. If we stay at that trend, you'll see, the water we sold, if it's, you know, if it's based on 900,000 gallons a year, it stays pretty stagnant, but the water we bought, it's gonna keep going up and up and up, and our net profit's gonna keep going down and down and down over the next three to five years. So, how much should we be charging our water customers? That's the big question. What do we need to, to charge them to get to our goals of doing this capital improvement project that we need to start doing over the next 10 to 15 years? So, but basically what I did was I did a water rate study, and I went through and I looked at every aspect of the water distribution system, and what do we need to improve on? What, what over the next 15 and 20 years is gonna have to be replaced, or built, or exchanged, or replaced? You know, that's what we need to figure out. So basically, this, this slide is all the water main in our town that still needs to be replaced, it's cast iron pipe. The last week and a half, we've had two major main breaks in our town. We had one on Philadelphia, which we lost 300,000 gallons from that water main break, and we had one on Chicago, a couple nights ago, we lost about 150,000 gallons. So in two nights, we almost lost a half a main gallons of water. That's a lot of revenue there that we just lost that we won't be getting back. So that's why it's important that we look at, you know, definitely in the short term, trying to get some of this water main replaced. Water main is geared to last 75 years, at least cast iron pipe is, and most of this pipe that's listed on here is 70 to 80 years old, so a lot of these pipes are gonna really start failing a lot. The worst, one of the worst streets, I can't say it's the worst, but one of the worst streets is Richmond Avenue in front of the Park District there, between Cass and Elm Street. It's 85 years old, and we've already had over 76 main breaks in those 85 years. So basically, we're averaging one a year on that street, so. But you can see here, the total cost, if we did want to replace the four and a six, eight and a 10 inch and a 12 inch pipe, it's gonna cost $17 million over the next 15 to 20 years if we want to replace that water main. Other capital improvements projects we want to do, Central Tower, that tower was built in 1958, it was, the life expectancy of that tower is 50 years. So, 2008 was the life, you know, that was it. So, we get it inspected every year, the tower's in, right now is in great shape, there's no problems, I don't want to alarm anyone, but it's something we need to really start thinking about replacing. I know Glenn, with the cell towers, the cell companies that are involved in it, it would be nice to build a new tower, get all those cell tower equipment inside the tank, you know, that's how the one in South, South Tower is, and it wouldn't look the way it does with all the, you know, all the wires running up on the outside, and the maintenance would be a lot easier if we, because this tank is gonna have to get painted probably in the next three to five years, and for that to happen, the cell companies are gonna have to take everything off that tower, and we're gonna have to paint it and then put it all back. So, it's something to think about in the near future, hopefully, if we can build a new tower, that'll avoid all that, that headache. And it will cost $3.5 million to replace right now. Painting South Tower, South Tower has never been painted, except for the original time it was painted, so again, it's due to be painted in the next three to five years, and that will cost about $300,000 to paint that tower. Constructing a new North Water Tower, we had discussed this before, there's a standard that every town should, should be at, as far as storage goes, you need to have at least two days worth of storage in your town. And right now, for us to achieve two days worth of storage, would be 5.5 million gallons of the storage. Right now, we have 4.5 million gallons of the storage. So, granted, our system's never completely full at any one time, so that's just, it's just a number out there, but to meet what their standards are, we need to build another 1 million gallon storage tank. And obviously, the, the most obvious place to have that would be on the north side. We have one in a central part of town, we have one on the south side of town, somewhere on the north side of town, north of Ogden would be ideal. That again, also would cost 3.5 million dollars. Another big project that's coming up is that water, water meter replacement program. The EPA standard is that every 15 years, your residential meters either have to be tested or replaced, and we are, most of our meters right now, you can see in here, are getting to that point, they're really getting close. Most of our meters are 13, 14 years old. So, in the next couple, two, three years, we're gonna have to either start replacing them, or getting them tested. Well, the cost of getting them all tested is about the same as getting them replaced. So it, it's very close. And the new style, the meters that are coming out now are guaranteed for 20 years, the new meters that Census has, that they're, you know, giving out to residents, or to municipalities. And, what that means is if a, if a one of the meters fails, they'll replace it at no cost. So, that's, that's why it's, it's gonna be nice to go with that, it's guaranteed for 20 years, and we don't have to replace it in 15 years, we can wait for 20 years to replace it. You can see here, all, just to replace all the 5/8 meters, it's gonna cost 2.1 million dollars just to replace all of them. That's including the, the meter, the MXU, which is a device we read the meter with, and the labor to go out and actually do it. We would contract that out, we'd have a company come out, because we just don't have the manpower to go out and replace, you know, 6,000 to 7,000 meters. The other size is 1-inch meter, to replace all those, including labor is $246,000, and inch and a half meters, 305,000. Now, our larger meters are 2, 3 and 4-inch meters that we have in town, they get tested every other year. So those meters, as they fail a test, they will get replaced, and we've been doing that all along. So those meters don't necessarily have to go on a replacement program, because we'll just replace as needed. So, the average monthly bill, this is another graph here that I wanted to show everyone, that average monthly bill is, average family uses about 15,000 gallons per month, and you can see on this graph, right now, we are, with all the towns in DuPage County, basically on this graph, we are right now the sixth lowest as far as the average monthly bill. So you can see all the way up to Hensdale, Oakbrook Terrace, Clarton Hills, Winfield, those are the higher ones, and then Naperville, Wheaton, Lyle, Woodridge, Barridge is lower than us. Wheaton has just increased their water rate, I just found that out today, so they are actually higher than us now. So we are at really the fifth lowest right now in DuPage County. Again, this graph kind of shows that, this adds the, the minimum bill again, the fixed cost into that, and you can see, Lyle jumps up when you add their fixed cost, Bloomingdale, Willow Brook, so there are some towns that try to hide their water rate by adding a fixed cost in there, or they add a utility tax, some towns add a 5% utility tax.
I don't think it's to hide it.
Well, you know what I'm saying, not to hide it, but it's to keep their water rate lower, you know what I mean? So it looks better on paper, I guess. So, that's, so you can see, sometimes it really makes a big difference once you figure that, figure that cost in. Okay, so again, what should our water rate be? For us to do all these capital improvements, we're gonna need pretty much $28 million over the next 15 years, which works out to be just under $2 million per year. And if you, it's figuring in the 5 to 15% cost that they're gonna increase, the commission will increase our water over the next five years. Once you factor in all those costs, is what would our rates look like over the next 15 years? The residential rates, as you can see, the first year, which is our current year, right now, our village rate is $2.29 is what we charge.
Village portion.
This is our village portion, right? DuPage Water Commission's charge is 2.28, so our total water rate right now is $4.37. You can see over the next six years, our village rate, the first year, would go up to 3.48, and DuPage Water Commission's charge would, would still stay 2.28, because that's what it is right now. So our total charge right now would be $5.76. And you can see, every year after that, our village rate would stay constant, and we would just pass through to DuPage Water Commission increase. So you can see, every year, it would just go up a little bit. Now, this is just forecasted out the next five years, assuming DuPage Water Commission's charge doesn't increase after that, then our rate would stay constant, but, you know, you can't forecast that out. But, you know, you can't forecast that out. And commercial's a dollar more. So, the rates are very similar. It's just that each rate is a dollar more, so. So then, the last slide here is what are, again, the average water bill. And you can see, right now, we're at $67.40. That's what an average resident pays right now. Their water rate would increase to, it's hard to see them, sorry, $89.50. So, you're looking at, an average water bill would go up approximately $22 a month. That's what the average increase would be if we did go with that increase. All right, any questions?
Go back to this slide. Sure. The residential one?
Okay.
That one?
Yep.
What we're trying to demonstrate here is the actual rate that we're talking about changing now is the, our water bills, the residents don't see this broken down into this format. We did this for you so that you could see the difference between the DuPage Water Commission component and what the actual village collects for itself. So, the rate would change from 2.09 to 3.48, so $1.39 is the, is the actual adjustment we're asking for tonight to accommodate the rate study. That's to, you know, avoid these large capital improvements in the future, you know, avoid bonding issues or other, you know, ways of trying to fund that. So, this is to prepare for 15 years' worth of improvements. It's laid out like this, I guess as a second option. I never talked to Kerry and I'm not really sure how it could be done, but I think it'd be very beneficial if our bill showed the difference between what our portion is and what the DuPage Water Commission rate is.
A lot of towns are doing that. A lot of towns are breaking it out so that everybody knows exactly what, you know, whose charge is what charge.
Yeah. I should have looked into that before tonight as far as physically how to program that. But ideally, we'd like to show that and then, so the first decision, you know, for your consideration is the actual village rate increase. And then the second one would be, and this is just optional how you prefer to handle it. We know that DuPage Water Commission proposes these rate changes in the increment and they forecast out what it should be for our planning purposes, and it's always on May 1st. So, should we, if it was on the bill separately, can we just change that when it occurs? Because what we do now is they change the rate and then we go through a couple-month process of approving the rate change, the incremental change, to pass that through, and then it takes another couple of months to implement it. So, we're four months to a half a year behind collecting on their adjustment. So, if there was a way to, if you were comfortable with, you know, just automatically, you know, May 1st having the DuPage Water Commission portion effective, we could do that. Or if you want it brought back each year, you know, we're happy to do that, too.
Well, can we do a, do an ordinance that when there's a rate increase to the village, that it's an automatic pass-through at the same amount? You know, we're not, we're not tacking anything onto that increase, but it's an automatic pass-through so that we avoid that downtime because every time it happens, we keep backing up. We lose money that we need for capital improvements on stuff, so.
Yes, that's easy enough to do.
Any problems with doing that?
I'm pretty proud that the village was at the bottom end of amounts charged compared to other villages.
And what's interesting is that, you know, we're all up in arms at ComEd's not updating its antiquated system so we don't lose power. I don't think that we can be in a position to say, well, you know, knock on wood, our 85-year-old mains that only break once a year and we lose a quarter of a million gallons, we got to do something. We're at their life's end. We're at the life's end of the meters. And breaking it down, even though if we hear from people and say, wait a minute, all this money's going to the village, you know, you're robbing me. At least, Mike has done a wonderful study with this where as, you know, when you listen to it, it all makes sense. It, you know, it's a, it puts us in a position of how could we not do it? So, and if your recommendations are that it's 15% just to, just to, I think that's not anticipating any major catastrophe, you know, like the entire 85-year-old system collapsing, that I think, trusty comments on whether we should go with their staff suggestions for the rate increase?
I don't see an option.
You have to.
I agree.
And just for, if I did my calculations right, that was about $2,200 worth of water we lost from that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You were doing something.
That's right. And we got out there fast and valved it down, but it was such a bad break. We replaced a 20-foot section of water main. That's how bad it was.
And that's what the third-place cracker's doing it, right?
Yeah. What if you guys came in sixth or something?
Yeah, if you guys weren't slower, it would have cost us.
Hopefully, this year we'll come in first, and we'll even be faster this year, so.
This was the circumstances of a very large diameter tree sitting over the problem. There was many hours of work that had to be done before they could even get to the water main.
Yeah, they worked 13 hours.
I know the one on Richmond was the same weekend as the bad storm.
Right.
So, it's like, talk about double whammy.
Okay, can we put that on the, maybe on Tuesday night's agenda, or does?
No, let's put it one following, so we have some time to make sure the ordinance is right.
Another last part I forgot to mention that we're recommending is that, you know, because we were talking about a rate change again, just a few months after the last one, that we make this effective maybe January 1st. To get started, the usages will be the lowest, you know, in the winter and the impact won't be as, you know, dramatic, you know, at first. And then when you get into summer, we'll, we already have, you know, a strong water conservation program.
Yeah, our next water bills will be everybody's summer usage, so they get hit right away. It'd be kind of really shocking to them.
Yeah, I'd rather do that in the lowest month, anyway.
Well, the other question is, do we want the ordinance to cover several years so we don't have to revisit this every year? That we can, you know, do it for three years or five years under the, under the proposed 15 and we can always re-investigate it if it's not an offer, or all of a sudden, you know, we can plan and code everything, which isn't likely.
Well, the village portion, by design, is not proposed to be changed again. So, it will just be the DuPage Water Commission increment. We've not done a village, since 1992, I think it's only been done once.
Right, for water rate study, yeah.
Yeah. So, the village portion.
This would pay for those proposed improvements you outlined over a 15-year period?
Right now, well, I can't say how much ductile iron and steel is going to cost five years from now, but for right now, that's what this would cover. Either way, it's going to get us started. I mean, it might not cover everything 15 years down the road. I mean, I'll be surprised if it does. But this is definitely going to get the meters changed out, the tower hopefully replaced.
Right now, we're.
A lot of water mains starting to replace.
Our revenue's going backwards, so we're kind of subsidizing right now.
And their best guess is that this is going to go up 15% each year?
No, it's, DuPage Water Commission said they're going to increase theirs by 5% to 15%, but it's, that's just their portion. Our portion's going to stay the same.
Right, but there's 5% to 15%?
That's what they're saying, but, you know, this year was 5%. Hopefully, it'll stay 5%. You know, they're kind of like us, we're kind of.
They're a mystery.
They're, well, they're totally at the hands of City Chicago. That's the problem is that, you know, it's all passed down. We're at the end of the line, so.
Yeah.
City Chicago increases it, DuPage Water Commission increases it, and then we have to follow.
And we just.
Exactly.
DuPage had their own problems, too.
Do we, if they decide to raise it more than 5%, do we, do we slide backwards, then?
No, we're, this rate change that we're suggesting tonight fixes just the village portion. And then the second topic for action, if you choose, is to automatically pass through the DuPage Water Commission increment as they occur.
Right, so if they increase it by 20%, that would get passed through.
Right.
I think we need to do that.
Well, I'm kind of.
Well, that we, that we've asked John to put that.
Then we don't have to guess what percent it is.
Right.
Kind of going back to what Ellen was saying about, can we frame this for a period of years in some manner?
Our rate, you definitely can.
But we just want to make sure we're notified what those increases were because we sure wouldn't want it to go through at a 20%.
Sure.
And then having another problem and we're not on top of.
No, they're very good at letting us know ahead of time. They're really, believe me, ever, after all the issues they've had in the past few years, they're really been.
They're on top of it now.
Yeah. Lot different than it was before because before, they were getting so much revenue, they didn't even know what to do with. Now, everybody's really on top of it. They're really, you know, we've had rebates in the past, if you guys remember. You know, so we've gotten money back from them because they charge us too much. Now, they're really on top of what their rate should be. It took them a few years, but they're really, they're good at it now. So, we should know exactly, you know, February, March, what their rate's going to be for that year.
Okay.
My thought was that, you know, as we've talked at the committee level, other communities do these kind of rate analysis every year.
Yes, they do. Lyle's a good one about doing that.
So, I think you have to evaluate to some extent every year as you get into the, looking towards the next fiscal year. So, I was thinking maybe asking if we could have the board by motion just put this study on file and direct the attorney to draft the ordinance for the next increase that would include the automatic increase for the pass-through each year. But then we would also be directed, we will, going to have to look at this every year and come back to you, look at the village portion, look at costs and.
Okay, and see where we are because we can't.
Public Works Committee, we can keep reporting back.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, as long as, you know, because then, I mean, a lot of work went into this, Mike. We understand that, that hopefully you'll just have to tweak it and say, okay, you know, here's where we are with the percentages and the, you know, gross and what nets to the village and, you know, because you're always looking at the cost of replacement and all that, so.
Well, Lyle, like Village Manager Cyril was saying, Lyle's a great example of that. They go back and revisit all their fees every year. They have an ordinance that says, you know, go back, so if their, say, a tapping fee goes up or a building permit goes up, they revisit that every year and that they have an ordinance that states that they will increase that, you know, that permit or whatever by what it needs to be increased by.
Yeah.
So, they revisit everything every year, which is a lot of work. I'm not suggesting that because that is a lot of work, but, but they are really.
But their rates will go up and down each year.
Yes, their rates have gone up and down. Sometimes, you know, their cost goes down and they lower the rate by that.
We've got a lot of capital projects staring us in the face.
Yes.
That we have to address and address soon.
Yes.
All right, well, I think that's a good idea, Ron.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, Westmont Chamber of Commerce Oktoberfest. Board to consider a permit request for live sound amplification at the Westmont Chamber of Commerce Oktoberfest on September 23rd from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at 25 North Cass
Good evening, board members. My name's Al Carson. I'm with the Westmont Chamber of Commerce. I'm a board director, and I want to tell you about an exciting event coming up. It's the Oktoberfest that will be held on September 23rd. Time will be between 6 o'clock to 10 o'clock in the evening. It will be at the Knights of Columbus. In fact, the Knights of Columbus will be partnering with the Chamber for this event. The dinner will consist of food from Uncle Bubbs. It'll be an Oktoberfest-type food. Commemorative cup will be given out to those that attend, and music will be provided by the Too Loud Polka Band.
The Not Too Loud.
Hopefully, it will be Not Too Loud. Because the request that I'm asking for is a permit for sound amplification. And so, I would hope that the band does not reflect what I'm asking for. The ticket price is $25, and again, the request is for sound amplification.
And that, anybody that's looking at the agenda, it says September 23rd, that's a Friday night?
That is correct, Friday night.
Anybody from the public have anything to say on this, other than Mr. Carson? Trustees? Comments?
It's going to be fun.
Sounds like a good time.
Everybody attend, please.
Yep.
Yes, we do need everybody to come. We're all set to provide you with an exciting evening, so all we need is you to come out. So, thank you for hearing my request.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. I need to interject something that I forgot earlier and the clerk kindly like reminded me. Tuesday night, due to the holiday, before the board meeting, is the Administration and Finance Committee meeting.
I just sent, I just sent Ron a message on there.
Starting at 6:00 p.m. in the executive conference room, so. All righty, we'll all be there. Number four, Westmont High School Homecoming Events. Board to consider a permit request for sound amplification and partial street closure of Cass Avenue for the Westmont Homecoming Parade and Bonfire Event on September 29th, 2011, from 6:15 to 9:00 p.m. So, what night is the 29th?
That would be a Thursday night.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Tom Demay. I'm the student council sponsor from Westmont High School. This is my third year at the school and second year as the sponsor, but first year playing the parade and homecoming events. We've been, I've been working with Larry McIntyre from the town, working to have this parade and events as close to what has happened in the past. So, we're hoping that these events are kind of like a town fixture, that nothing, hopefully, is a surprise to the members of the town. So, we're asking for a permit to close the portion of Cass just north of the tracks and our parade hopefully will go through Cass and turn east onto Melrose where the, our teams, our junior high band, our high school band will disperse and head towards the high school on the road where we will conduct our bonfire, our annual bonfire for the pre-homecoming activities. Since we will have bands, the high school band, marching band, and the junior high band performing on the street, that is part of our request, as well as during the bonfire, we will have the student band that won our Battle of the Bands contest to perform as a student activity because we're really hoping to boost student morale and school spirit as our, one of our focuses of student council this year. So, our request is for a permit for the partial street closure and sound amplification permits.
Good. The police department has always presented in the past just to show people how they're going to close off Cass and where. I don't know, does the chief have the map with him tonight, or?
I do not believe he does.
Okay, could we do that on Tuesday? Just so that people watching know what to expect if they've got to get across the tracks and, and haven't had to do it in the past umpteen years during homecoming.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
As in past years, with the bonfire, the ordinance includes a waiver of the open burning ordinance. And I know the fire department cooperated with the high school to make sure they had a presence in past years. I assume they will again.
Hopefully.
We put in, as part of our request, a presence from the fire department.
I think we're all thumbs up. We still have to vote on it Tuesday, but, yeah, we're, it's a good thing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. And thank you for your superb organizational skills. Number five, the downtown development permit. 37 West Quincy Street. Board to consider an ordinance approving a downtown development permit for Mr. Michael Talier.
Talier.
Talier, okay, well, not the French version of it. For the musicians workshop at 37 West Quincy Street. Welcome, Mr. Talier.
Thank you. Well, that's exactly it. I'm hoping to open this business right across, or right next door, actually. The music workshop, musicians workshop will be a music learning center, retail shop. Mainly what we'd like to do is cater private studio lessons. We encourage high school, middle school kids, kind of as an after-school program. The retail portion of the business will, to cater to, you know, anything basically the student would need, be it method books or staff papers, sheet music. We'll also offer strings and, and tuners and all of that kind of thing. Eventually, down the road, I'd like to incorporate like a repair center as well and do group classes, so we're really excited and, you know, with Greg, you know, we, we've already discussed future plans for next door and, you know, you know, with your permission, of course, we look excited to open.
What type of instruments will you be repairing there, or do you go out, like, if somebody has piano repair, you go to their house?
And again, this is, this isn't the foreseeable future. In the first couple of years of building, we're, we're just going to be opening up the retail center and the, and the lesson portion of things, but down the road, this is something we'd like to do, and it would be, it would be at the, the facility itself. But again, what my request is for you today is just the retail portion of it and, and the private lessons, so.
Great, and I trust that Mr. Kimball's office has explained to you, like, the facade grant program and that type of thing, because you did a lovely Photoshop-
Yes.
Thank you.
What the-
Projected, yeah, that's-
Yes, marquee will look like, not marquee, what do you, Bonnie, yes, thank you.
Correct.
Any comments from the public? Comments or questions from trustees?
I would just encourage you to meet with our Chamber of Commerce and hopefully become active in that organization. They're very, very active. They work very closely with our downtown, so I think you'd be happy there.
Yeah.
There's a nearly identical store in downtown Wheaton, Suburban Music. Kind of a smaller space, retail sales, individual lessons, very, very popular and seems like a good addition to that downtown.
Great.
I happen to know from lots of personal experience there.
Well, I always wanted to learn to play the saxophone, but every dog I've ever had attacks me when I start, and it does the same thing that I've never learned to play because they won't let me play, so if, if you teach saxophone lessons, I'll go there and take them.
We would love to have you.
And scare all the dogs in town, right? Pretty much. At least I'll get them all howling.
Sure. Well, we would love to have you.
Nice complement with the violin shop now, too.
Yes. Yes.
Right.
Very nice.
We walked in there and, and met with, with one of them. They're not open yet, actually, or right on Cass Street, is what you're referring to. Yeah, they have a wonderful, uh, display of cellos and-
Beautiful, isn't it?
Yes.
Really nice.
We're very, very proud that they chose Westmont.
Great.
So welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Number six, downtown development permit, 29 North Cass. Board to consider an ordinance approving a development permit for Michael Tucker for Wine Tuck LLC, and I will guess where you got the name Wine Tuck, at 29 North Cass.
Madam Chairman, we're at a loss to explain. We were under the impression that Mr. Tucker was going to be here this evening. He certainly seemed well-prepared in the preparation of his application. We can tell you from a staff level that he does appear to have the necessary occupational experience. He has approximately, I think, 18 years of experience, both with wine distributors and in the operation and management of wine stores in two other communities. I think Deputy Chief Gunther, Deputy Liquor Commissioner Gunther, has also a liquor license application background check in process with Mr. Tucker?
I haven't seen the application yet.
Okay, all right, but we've met with him on what, two occasions, I believe, and he appears ready to move ahead. We think this is a natural for the downtown, because as the board may recall, 29 North Cass was the former home of Divine Wine, a very nice wine boutique in our downtown, and this would be an obvious, nice replacement for that, that would complement some of the other retail stores downtown. We will certainly endeavor to contact Mr. Tucker and ensure that he is here on Tuesday night, but we are unable to explain his absence this evening.
Mr. Kimball, on behalf of the board, then, I would invite him to come on Tuesday night to, to talk to the board, so, because it'll, you know, it's a voting night, and, you know, if he couldn't, something happened tonight, he couldn't show up, then please have him come on Tuesday.
Something for the board to keep in mind, the Class 15 liquor license, which was developed for wine stores downtown, slowly got expanded to accommodate the various needs of Divine Wine's. It may be more expansive than what this applicant needs once, or more so than what the board wants, so in light of this applicant coming in, you may want to ask him some questions about tent events, sale of wine, tasting of wine. They also were allowed to have beers. You may want to restrict that license a bit through a text amendment.
Okay. Or not, in case he wants to do lots of things like-
Right.
Divine did. That was great.
Be great.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kimball. Number seven, downtown development permit, 100 South Cass. Board to consider an ordinance approving a downtown development permit for Brian and Linda Polacek for digital conference providers and innovators pre-market at 100 South Cass Avenue.
I think this will be a family effort, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
This is very definitely a family effort.
They're not happy that you're in here, I gotta tell you.
Oh, they're not happy.
Well, we all wanted to be part of this, so we're, this is Linda back there, and that's my children, Henry and Amelia. So, we would like to open up a, it's a innovators pre-market marketplace. It's products that have not yet hit a market, I am sorry, have not yet hit a market-
Break in.
But we, we work with them to develop them, and then we put them in a store for sale, that's basically.
Pardon my ignorance, explain it a little more. Is this like you take things that-
Okay, well, I brought in something to show you so you can visualize.
Like for young inventors that are looking for somebody to help them?
Yeah, it's young inventors, innovators. We're currently working to, to develop more products. We've got three products right now. We've got a Supreme griddle pan, which was developed by an independent inventor, and it's not in a marketplace right now, and I have an example here so you can kind of visualize. We've got a, a hot dog cutter that has been made. We've got handmade soaps that are made with holy water, and we've got another one that just came up. Yeah, that's kind of a funny one. And we got another one that just came up, which, which is like a, a hand compressor for garbage. So it's, it's inventors and innovators that, that would, that would have product in the store, and we would also help them develop maybe a marketing strategy, maybe some text, have you heard of opt-in text marketing, things like that?
So you will sell these products out of the storefront?
Yes, yeah.
Not just create them there, but sell them?
No, we're not actually creating, yeah, we're working, we're working with the inventor.
They'll be in stock there?
Yes.
Will you also have a website?
Yes.
So what percentage of these sales would be storefront as opposed to on the website?
Well, I, I don't know, but everything, everything that we have will be in the storefront, okay? That'll be the agreement. We will have, we, right now, we have 25 of these griddle pans, and they're, they're working, Supreme Cooking Systems is working on other things, so we'd get those in there, too. We'll have, of the soaps, we'll have 25 plus some gift boxes, okay? And then, and then the, the exciting thing, I think, about it is that it's always going to be a renewed inventory, okay? So once you're in the store, you haven't been in the store next week because there's going to be new products there, okay? It's, it's constantly going to be evolving.
Sounds interesting.
So it's like an office that's open to the public with the, which you can buy there also, is basically what it is? Because have you been doing this out of your home or out of another office before this?
Well, okay, there, well, there's, there's two things I'm, I'm here for. The office space in the back would be shared with our innovators and with digital conference providers. Digital Conference Providers is a conference recording company, and there's five of us. Two of us would be working out of the, out of the office, and we have someone working out of Shanahan, and then we have someone working in Atlanta, those kind of things. But it'd be, the, the office space would be kind of a hub where we ship out equipment. We do a lot of onsite work at, at conferences, okay? But the storefront for the innovators, that would just be a storefront. It's not going to be an office at all. It's strictly a storefront with, with products.
How many employees do you expect?
We have one right now. Yeah, myself and one other person.
Any parking issues, Mr. Kimball?
Not at this time, trustee. We think in the event that Mr. Polacek, who is also the owner of the building, by the way, if, if he's successful in getting a, a client for that, that other middle use, why then we may be maxed out at the parking, and we may be, have to come back before the board for a, a parking variance approval request. But as the, the landlord of the building, I think we point out for our viewing audience tonight, he's made some obvious improvements to the building-
Yes.
Cited a women's retail clothing store there, Bridget's Boutique, which seems to be very well-received thus far in the community, and we, we thought it was just kind of interesting. Mr. Polacek is always thinking, and the soap with the holy water happens to be marketed right across the street from Holy Trinity Church. We thought that was kind of-
Got my attention.
So this 100 South Cass, the storefront is where the cleaners was? Is that the, the space?
Yeah, well, the, 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 the middle space.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then Bridget, Bridget's doing very well over there, and, and we're hoping that Bridget is going to be for, be before you again for a men's clothing store on the other side.
Okay.
Okay, we're hoping, we're hoping that she'll do that. She's, she's talking about it, she's excited about where she is and having terrific, she's getting cookies, people are bringing her cookies.
Oh.
So it's been really supported.
Great.
So, did you want to see anything?
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't.
Here's, here's some of the, the advertisement for our hot dog cutters, okay? Not actually ours, but, you know, what we, and we'd have these in the store, and in addition to the product in the store, we would also have the product story in the store, okay? So it would be really for innovators, and hopefully we'd get some people that come in and are inspired as well, and we can help them and get product in our store as well.
It's an opportunity, I think, to get some media coverage. This is so unique.
Yeah.
You know, media coverage, you know, be it WGN or something more local, but to really-
A new newspaper right off the bat.
Possibly the brand-new newspaper in town.
Yeah, I, I think there's, I think there's a lot of potential, and, and where I really am becoming exciting about it, excited about is what, how people are responding to Bridget in, in the clothing store. I see her little red bags go by at my doors all the time. There, there are people, I, I stop off at the, the coffee shop over here and, and mention something to Sylvia, and then someone hears, and we're talking about Bridget's store, and it, it's exciting, it's, it is. Here's one of the soaps that we have.
Yeah.
That's our own personal one, it's, it's been sitting for a while, so. And then the idea behind the griddle pan is that it's stove top-ready, okay? It's got a catch basin around here so that the grease has come through here. The inventor actually cooks spaghetti in here as well, but, but, you know, at the same time, if you cook eggs and bacon over here, you're keeping the two separate, and then on the bottom, he's got it set for camping environment, so that you put, you put the, you ever see the little single propane burners? You put the single propane burners on there, and it's a cooking surface right there and heat it at the bottoms. So that's, and, and we're, and, and his name is Carl that works on this, and Carl is going to be very involved with us, although not really an employee. He's developing other cooking products, too, so we'll probably have a lot of cooking products in there.
I like it. The custom Pelican case for it.
So, you know, aside, aside from, aside from it being a store with these, these products in it, I think I mentioned, it's going to be a story, the, the story of the product is going to be in the store as well.
So it will be only these new projects? I mean, we wouldn't walk in and see the pocket fisherman on the shelf.
No, no, no.
This is all-
Yeah, we, we've actually kind of gone back and forth on the title of, of the store, whether it would be not yet on TV or pre-market work, or pre-marketplace kind of things. These are things that are in the process of being launched.
Cool.
Okay, yeah, and then hopefully, hopefully they take off in our, in our store, and we keep inventory in there and add to it, and then, you know, the following week, we'll be looking for a new inventors. There's inventors conferences, it's kind of a natural segue for me, there's inventors conferences everywhere, so, so that's where we'll be pulling a lot from, and, and then we'll be using a lot of the text marketing to, to drawing new people.
This is interesting.
Interesting concept.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Well, hopefully. Hopefully.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, it'll be on our agenda Monday night, and away we go.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday, sorry. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
You're signaling me.
Anything? No? Okay. Want to make sure.
You could sell bungee cords for little tiny kids, that as they run away, you just pull them back and they zoom right back. Just a thought, I'm-
Hopefully you can come in the store and let us know about it.
There you go.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Number eight, Class 17 liquor license. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Westmont Code of Ordinances to create a new Class 17 liquor license.
Good evening. The, the request before you tonight is for the creation of a language for a Class 17 license. The request is inspired by the Standard Market, which is located at 333 East Ogden Avenue. Once the request came to me, we, we looked at the language and, and came to the realization that there wasn't one set of lang, one, one liquor class that suited everything that they wanted to have happen. So with Attorney's M&amp;X help, we crafted language for the liquor classification for the Class 17 to meet the Standard Market's needs. So there's no confusion. We're not asking for a liquor license to be issued, we're just asking for the actual language, so it's generic at this point. In roughly a month and a half, probably mid-October, members of the Standard Market will be before the board requesting the issuance of, of an increase in licenses from zero to one. Some of the highlights of the Class 17 is it's a grocery store, and it's a restaurant, wine bar, all contained under one roof. The grocery store will sell packaged goods, beer, wine, and liquor, and the restaurant and wine bar will also sell consumable beer, wine, and liquor on the premises. There are restrictions in place. There are, there's a maximum seating capacity of the wine bar of eight, and that is built within the language, and there's also language in for, for wine and beer tastings. The restaurant slash bar will contain the alcohol that's consumed on the premises within a confined geographic location on the premise. It's not going to be commingled with the, the packaged goods. With that, any questions?
Like how you've, how you've listed a cutoff point for the beer tastings, too. Two ounce serving, limit to three per person.
Seem fair. Oh, hi, Fred.
Madam Chairman, I think based on this request from the petitioners, we were invited to accompany them, so Deputy Liquor Commissioner Gunther, myself, and, and the mayor attended with the owner-operators of the Standard Market and visited a place in Lincoln Park in Chicago, the Whole Foods building there, that has a, a unique five-story parking deck built right in with the new grocery store. It's magnificent on the inside, and we walked in there, and they have a full-service martini bar that operates out of the Whole Foods grocery store. That is just something to behold, and we had some obvious concerns about, well, what, what are we going to see when we go in there? And sure enough, we walk in the door, and the first thing we see is an elderly lady, very attractively attired, pushing her cart with one hand and a martini in the other hand.
I was going to wonder if they have the things like Dominix has for the Starbucks cup holders, the little, you know, prong thing to set your martini in your cart.
And Deputy Chief Gunther immediately made a beeline for the security personnel, and Jim, I'll let you talk about your conversation in that regard.
Sure, there was a, a small eight-and-a-half by 11 sign on the door that says, "No alcohol beyond this point," which the security guard was standing next to at the exit, and I said, "Hey, here's the people I'm with, this is the issue that we're looking at. What issues do you face with this type of operation, this kind of setup?" And for the, the size and, and the scope of this Whole Foods in Chicago, he said, "We have no problems whatsoever. We have no, no, no alcohol's walking out the door, we have no fights, no, nobody's thinks that this is out of the ordinary," and he said it was really a non-issue as far as he was concerned. He was, you know, more there for the shoplifting aspect of, of the, the jewelry and soap department, so.
Martini drinkers typically aren't brawlers, it's, you know.
I don't know that they're even grocery shoppers.
This ordinance, right now, restricts consumption to either the designated wine bar area or to the designated restaurant, so you can't shop with a drink in your hand, nor can you buy a packaged liquor at the cashier and bring that packaged liquor back into the store and BYOB or something like that.
Yeah, I've read this, I'm fine with keeping it, keeping it contained.
Yes, and the, the, the store itself has very distinct boundaries contained within it, so it's, we looked at the floor, floor plan extensively, and there, there are very distinct boundary lines to be drawn.
Right.
The mayor's local liquor commissioner reviewed this, he was in favor of the provisions. It was also sent to Standard Markets since it's the genesis of this, and they thought everything was fine.
Any other comments or questions from the board? The public's a little thin, but, Bob, any questions? All right, well, it'll be on the agenda on Tuesday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number nine, award of roof replacement contract, Glenbrook Group. Board to consider a construction contract bid award ordinance with the Glenbrook Group for a roof replacement at the water plant.
I guess the actual details of the project you've heard before, discussing, you know, the engineering contracts that were previously awarded for this. The plans and specifications were prepared by veteran women engineers, and the, and the bids for this construction project were advertised. We received open and, and read the bids on August 9th. The engineer has, you know, subsequently reviewed, you know, the bid submittals, and with everything being in order, you also have attached their recommendation for award. The bid amount was $72,000 relative to the engineer's estimate of probable cost, which was $72,000. was $75,000, so, um, let's recommend award of this construction contract.
Good recommendation. Works.
And the ordinance is, you, you recommend approving the bid as the lowest responsible bid, and then authorizing staff to execute a contract consistent with the bid documents.
Thank you.
Steve, can you just tell me what an environmentally friendly green roof system is?
Well, the, back, instead of just, you know, ripping everything off and, you know, throwing tar up there, and traditional roofing systems, a, a green roof system, this isn't a complete green roof system, but the, the, the membrane and the underlayment and all of these parts, for example, it should be, um, you know, like a white membrane material instead of a darker one, and it's to accommodate if we choose to go with, uh, trade plant material on the roof, um, which was the recommendation of the ad hoc committee on climate change when, when that was formed. So, we're still following on those recommendations. So, we're, we're, we call it Phase A of, of that type of improvement.
So, that's something we're gonna be looking to go to, is the trade?
Right. Yeah, that, that's not part of this bid, it's simply the, the watertight aspects of the roof that need attention right away.
What is the maintenance on that tray stuff?
Very low. It's, uh, it's designed to be low, it's, it's just, um, you know, sits out and, uh, you know, accommodates the precipitation that falls on the roof and, and tries to recycle that in the plant material, and then all the, you know, the good benefits of having, you know, vegetation as opposed to just all of it immediately running off, and then all the, the temperature advantages, too, you know, from...
Thank you.
You know, heat loss.
Okay.